All right, if we could stand for the Pudge Leagins and do stay standing for a moment of silence for yesterday's event?
911.
911 event.
I'd like to lead this debate. The United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, in this law of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We're gonna read all 3,000 names off. We're gonna call our meeting order. Pudge Leagins will call all board members present except for Darryl, who is excused tonight. You have proper notification of an open meeting. First action item is recommendation to approve the minutes of the August 15th, 2018 regular board meeting and August 15th, 2018 annual meeting. I won't read out those minutes. We have a motion and a second. Any question on those? Hearing not all, in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next action item is resolution to approve the bill list, which was included in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the bill list.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on that? Hearing not all, in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is communication attendance from members of the public.
I don't know if I've signed up. I don't know if he wants to speak.
Are the G Ds?
Yep, I signed up.
Okay, absolutely.
Want to speak?
Yep, come on up.
Thanks for hearing me. I'm gonna mix things up seeing that no one ever comes here to talk to you guys. Today, I'm here to talk about an email that I received today from school. And I've been in communications with Mr. Bolt today about this email. And it's regarding the behavioral assessment system for children. All familiar with that? Okay. I have some concerns about the way it's presented. Some of the questions I asked Adam today, if parents had the opportunity to review the questions before screening, and he provided me those questions, so I got those. I asked him if you don't sign, if you don't opt out from this, doesn't mean the students will still have to do the screening. He answered that. He told me that. Basically, it said the students could opt out themselves. And if the students did opt out themselves, they'd be asked if there was a reason why they'd opt out themselves. I'm not sure that screening like this is up to a student to decide whether he wants to opt in or out. I think that's a parent's decision. I asked him if the parents who missed seeing the email that went out don't opt out, will the students be required to do the screening? So it's the same answer. Kids will be given the opportunity to opt out or not. And then I asked if, assuming the opt-out form was not signed, and the student is required to take the screening, which doesn't sound like he is, why isn't the screening an opt-in form instead of an opt-out form? In case for those parents who are getting inundated with emails, I'm one of them. Fortunately, I didn't miss it. If parents aren't paying attention, or if they're missing it, then, you know, the kids are, the kids could take the tap-based screening without the parents' knowledge. So I think it would be a good idea to have the kids, or the families, the parents, opt in for this program. And there's a couple of reasons why. The other reason is, you know, there's also no official disclosure on this screening. Meaning, you know, how is the data gonna be used? And who's it gonna be shared with? And things like if an event would come up where it required law enforcement, how is that handled? None of that's disclosed in the procedure of this screening. So I think that's important for parents to know. It's just kind of a general email, yes or no. Now, obviously, I think we're gonna opt out of this. But I think I'm speaking for the parents who aren't here or aren't paying attention to their emails. I can certainly understand why this might be needed with all the things that are going on. You know, we're, my wife and I are very involved parents. We think we have a very good feeling of who our son is and what he is. Hopefully, I'll never be proven wrong. But I can definitely see that there are some families who are involved with their children and where this would be very helpful to the school. But I think that, I think parents need to opt in instead of opt out. The other part of it is because it involves counselors and psychologists, I'm not sure that information like this is violating HIPAA laws. Because we're talking about some, you know, psychological processes here, which is kind of medical. So I have a concern about that as well. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Hopefully, there's time to change that to an opt-in procedure. And any future things like this that could involve children's health or behavior, where things like this, parents are given the opt-in procedure instead of the opt-out procedure. Thank you.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
And our first superintendent's report item should be very enlightening, engaging, interesting. We had a group of students go to Tanzania for a cultural experience and service. And I can't wait for you to hear about it. So Mr. Harriet is here, and I'll let him take away.
I'm gonna bring up my desk kids. I've got Ellie and Karliya here, who graciously responded to my request to come and present. In fact, obviously, this was in planning for quite some time. And both of these girls went with us to Ecuador. So during our trip, we were already talking about it'll be great to bring back this message to our board and let them know what happened. So I could go on forever about this, but I'm gonna let them talk about it because it was their experience. So ladies, take it away.
I'm Ellie Artone. I'm a senior here.
I'm Karliya Shoki. I'm also a senior. And basically, what we'll be presenting is just the values of service trips as we found on both Ecuador and Tanzania. And just kind of the things we've learned and how much it's like changed our lives entirely going on these trips and traveling with Mr. Harriet and Ms. Heko.
So because Tanzania is so far away, it did take us about two days to get to where we were going. We met at Arrowhead and then drove to O'Hare, where we took an eight-hour plane ride to Amsterdam. And we had about a four-hour layover there. So we were able to experience a little piece of Europe as well. And then after that, we took another eight-hour flight to the Kilimanjaro Airport in Tanzania. And then we took a two-hour bus ride to the Gilligan Leadership Center in Orusha, which is where we spent our first night.
And then from that, we transferred from the Gilligan Leadership Center to our home for the trip, or was we supposed to camp the week?
I swear I use this every day.
And basically, the first thing that we, like our hour-long car ride, or bus ride, the first thing that we did was we were welcomed by the, some of the mamas of the community, who sang and danced for us as we came off the bus and shook our hand and hugged us. And then, once we actually got into the camp, all of the workers, all the camp workers, all welcomed us with a song as well. And we all went in our names. They all led us. And then immediately from there, we went to activity, where we just got to know each other, including the guides, Shaza and Amos. And, Shaza and Amos. And then we got to introduce ourselves as well and what we wanted to do here and kind of what our goals were. And then from there, we went to a market where we had $7 to get enough food and supplies for a family between four or more people in that family, and then we had to get supplies for a week. So after we did that to our best of our ability, we had to kind of reflect on why that was important and pretty vital to understand that this is what they live on. And we were very grateful.
So day four was our first building day. So what we were doing, our service trip was to build a classroom for an overcrowded school. So the first day, we were digging up dirt and moving it so that we could start laying the foundation for the area that goes around the classroom. And we spent about two hours doing this. And everyone was working really hard. And I think we were all surprised by how much we were willing to do. The campers said that we were the most hard-working group they'd ever had. And then after we built, we went to the area that was right next to the school. And that was our first time really meeting the kids. And we played soccer with them. And even though there was that language barrier, we were still able to connect with them and have a lot of fun with them. And they were all really interested in learning our names. So even as the days went by, and we'd walk by the school, like you could hear them calling our names as we walked by. So then after we played games with them, we went on a hike of the entire landscape around the community that we were staying in. And see, like, these are some mamas that were doing their tours of getting like firewood on their way home. And we saw how people do their laundry outside as well. And then after the hike, we returned to the camp and we learned some Swahili. So we were able, we did have, towards the end of the trip, we were able to communicate with the kids a little bit. But they did all kind of laugh at our accent because we pronounced everything a little wrong.
Yeah. And then day five, so other than our service work and we were building the school for three days, we also did various other activities to try our best to help the community in a certain way every day. So this day, we did a water walk with the mamas. So they obviously don't have water that goes straight to their homes, so they had to use these cans that are jerry cans and had to carry them on their heads with a rope. So we had as many cans as we could carry, one to a person, obviously. And we carried the amount of water that they need for one or two days, which is all of those cans, whether cattle and washing purposes and just drinking even. And that was one way in which we could help the mamas as much as we could. And then while we were there, we got to meet two of the mamas, Joa and Elena. And they welcomed us into their home. And they showed us around and kind of showed us what they do day to day. And then, yeah, that was their house. That small, they had family, two families, both like six kids. The next slide. And then either just some of the amazing kids that we met, there was hundreds of them. And they were all the kindest, sweetest kids. They had the most fun. We've never met like kinder kids. And they played with us in any way possible, even though, she said there was a language barrier. But there was people, there was kids from ages very young to like teenagers that were around our age. But I mean, these are like the kids you see in pictures everywhere. They're always smiling. And I never expected them to be exactly that.
So on day six, another way that we gave back to the community was we helped to protect a house where boys go after their surgery into manhood. And we combined, it's called boneless smearing, which is combining cow manure, dirt, and water. And we used gloves. And we had to mix all of that together. And then we smeared that on the house, which it actually wasn't, it didn't smell as bad as we thought it was going to. But I mean, it was still definitely a once-in-a-lifetime experience. So we smeared the entire house. And yeah, which was really fun. And then we had our second day of building, which was making concrete and then laying it down, part of the foundation for the classroom. And we even wrote like "Arrowhead, Wisconsin" there. So we left our little mark. And then, yeah. And then that was a smelly day, so we just headed back to the camp and all showered.
And then day seven, this was another day that we could help the community in a different way than just building their classroom. We were actually helping the dads, the mamas, by helping them herd goats and cattle and sheep and helping them move them where they needed to go. Obviously, you can imagine how big of a group of animals that was. So we all kind of helped as much as we could. And in that time, it was a bit of a calm state. So we got to meet some of the other community members. See Mr. Harriet talking to some of the guides. And then, so this is another one of our guys in the group who was talking to this little boy and then his mom and all of us. And it was also one of our group members' birthdays. So they made us, they made her a very nice cake. And it was just this whole big celebration. It was so much fun.
So day eight was the safari day, which was a very exciting day. We took a four-hour bus ride to the National Park. And we took two different buses, just so that everyone in our group could have a window seat, so they could be able to see everything around us. So we saw every animal that you think of when you think of Africa. And so we saw elephants, giraffes, zebras. We saw two lions, which is very rare, too. We saw wildebeests, impalas, all these kinds of birds. And then as we were on that safari, we did, each bus had the Maasai warrior with the animals around us. And then after the safari day, we went to a shanga store, which, well, it's called the shanga store. And it is employed only by disabled people. Just so they have a chance to have a job when typically in that area, they probably wouldn't be able to find anything because of the lack of opportunities for them. And they create pieces of art and different products using only recycled goods.
And then this was our last day kind of being in the community for that term. So at the beginning of the day was our last building of the classroom. So we were actually building up the walls. So we were putting cinder blocks on top of this event that we made the previous day and then also making support for that. And just doing as much as we could, because we knew we had limited time, obviously. And after that, we had this big celebration, say goodbye to all the kids. As there were so many, we didn't say goodbye to all of them. So we, they told us what they wanted to say to us after their goodbyes. And we told them theirs. And just said goodbye to the kids that we had met and just so quickly had built relationships with. So it was very hard, a very emotional day. And at the end, they had warrior training, where we got to see all the weapons that the Maasai warriors used. And then that night had a celebration where they made us another cake and then had a whole big celebration.
So then days 10 and 11 were just us getting ready to return home. So after we left the camp that we were staying at, we stopped at different stores so we could buy gifts for our friends and family to take home. And then we did the same trip that we took there. So we left from the Kilimanjaro Airport to Amsterdam and then from Amsterdam to Chicago.
And we just wanted to say that this entire time, we, like, it obviously wasn't a resort. It wasn't anything nice. But none of us minded because it was just an experience of a lifetime. And none of us would trade that for anything, no matter the luxury. I mean, we were staying in tents, quarter of a tent. And then the showers had to be warmed up by the employees there. And so me and Ellie, we, those entire 11 days, we only showered once.
Okay, well, we didn't smell. We had the other.
Is there a smearing day?
Okay, yeah, we said that was the day.
But, and we just felt extremely safe. I mean, these people, they did over-the-top, made us feel so secure in that camp. And we couldn't ask for anything more. And like I said a thousand times, we've never met more kind or welcoming people. I mean, we just wish we could go back and then just see them again because we built such close relationships in such little time. And after, after every activity that we did, after every day, we had a reflection with everyone in our group, all of our guides. We got to talk about what we learned that day, how it affected us, how it's going to affect us, if there's anything that we could say. And just, I mean, this entire time, the little things like learning Swahili. And there was a lunar eclipse over there, which was just absolutely incredible. And you can imagine, there's no light pollution, so it was beautiful. And then going on walks with some people, learning songs, playing cards with our guides, Shaza, Amos, and Ole and Prochaz. And then just dancing and singing and having a long celebration.
And the entire trip, we felt super safe the entire time. When, even when we were sleeping, there'd be people staying up late, like just in case something were to happen. And they would stay up all night, just like, we had like security around the camp that would just guard us, because there was some like hyenas. But we had dogs protect us from those. And then even if you were like a picky eater, had dietary restrictions, like I'm a vegetarian, so I couldn't eat meat. But they had a variety of different foods we could eat. So they, the foods they would give us every day were EF certified, so everything was safe. No one got sick from the food. There was a combination of food that comes from their culture and their area, combined with like more Western-style foods, like bread and butter and rice. Well, I guess rice is, you know. And all that. And we still keep in contact with our group leaders, like Shaza, Amos, Ole, and Prochaz. And the experiences that we made, like that we had on this trip are like, we can't even really put them into words. It's something that you can't just talk about because you actually have to be there to experience it. And it shows the importance of international relations and how important it is to really, when you travel, to actually experience the culture rather than just going to a hotel. And I think I can speak for the entire group when we say that we want, we're gonna be talking about this trip for the rest of our lives.
And we just hope that all the people who did these experiences, because this is our last year here, and we hope that we can do it again. But after we leave, we never know. So we're just hoping that as many people as can do this, too.
Any questions? Yes.
I have two questions. When you went to get the water, what was the water source?
It was just, I don't know where.
It was a well that had a trough, a big trough. They had to fill it up. Yeah, see, there's a trough. And then the well is over there. And you basically just had to use scoops to put it into the jerry can.
So it was clean water?
The water was not clean. It was the water that they share with the cattle. And it actually has, I think they said there was an excess amount of fluoride in it, so it actually turns their teeth brown. But I mean, we, I mean EF supplied us really clean water. But it just showed us like the lack of sanity they have, or sanitariness.
They actually, they do have access to some different sources. But for instance, like this is the trough that all the animals will feed out of. There's also, if you look to the background of that picture, you can also see there's another, like, there's an actual water spout that you could have gotten, you could have filled up from. So sometimes, like by choice, they'll, they'll just kind of use it. Well, we'll take it here, it's available. Somebody else is at the spout, even though that would be cleaner.
Okay. And then you mentioned the workers. Who are the workers?
If you could go back to the first building day.
Are they Westerners?
No.
No.
They're from there. They're from Tanzania. But they obviously know as much English as possible. And they would do jobs like, when we had to take a shower, they would have to boil water, and it was basically cold water. And they put it in a bucket that had a shower spot on it. So they would have to do that and then like cook for us. It was basically, they just stayed at that camp and helped us with whatever we had to do and eat it. And then clean our tents and stuff like that. So like these people here, and they would also help us with building because we're not always the strongest. They help us with the, the hemisdom. Yeah, we also built relationships with them.
Can you talk about the Maasai warriors?
Yeah, so we had two Maasai warriors with us. They were.
That's Ole.
Yep, that's Ole and then Prochaz. And so basically, yeah, there's Prochaz. They.
So they were describing the different traditions that come from their tribe. And they were very, very smart, so they knew all the history of the areas all around us. So as we were experiencing these different things, they were telling us the history behind it and why it's important and that we have to do it.
And like even Shaza and Amos, who worked as Maasai warriors, but they were, everyone who worked with us or interacted with us was from Tanzania, from West Asia. So Shaza, one of our guides, actually grew up at the base of Kilimanjaro.
Do the Maasai still predominantly, I think, would know still nomadic and deal with goats and cattle and such?
Their wealth is measured by how much cattle they have. So they all still have their own little.
But they, but they are also, they are very territorial. So they have villages. Kind of being there was sort of some insight into why you have a lot of that tribal conflict. Because when water runs out and all you have is this 20 acres, you have to go somewhere. And it's the next 20 acres over. And that's where they run into issues. But they, I mean, everything that you see, like where Prochaz would walk in the middle there, it's all open grazing areas. And one of the things they'll do politically between tribes is they'll sign treaties, so to speak, to share some of that grassland. Because as you can see, it's not, there's not a lot of it. But that's all, that's all they insist on.
How many went on this trip?
I think it was 21 students and then three adults that Mr. Harriet and Ms. Heko.
And how was Tanzania chosen?
Oh, Ellie actually was one of the people who suggested because she's always wanted to go to Africa.
Yeah, I actually, I was actually saving up to go to Africa through the National Geographic's Do Next Expeditions program. And then I was talking. After Ecuador, yeah. Because I loved Ecuador so much, I just wanted to keep traveling. And then we were talking to Mr. Harriet and Ms. Heko throughout like the beginning of the year and talking about how much we still want to go on another service trip because it's always more fun to go with your friends. And then, yeah, and then they understood how important, like, how much we loved going on that trip. And I think they loved going on Ecuador, too. So they wanted to do another trip as well. So then they worked hard to make Tanzania happen.
Were you working on a well in Ecuador? That you were, you were working on a well there, right?
A water treatment facility, yeah. So it's something to bring, like a very, I don't know what to call it, a tribe that was Do It Today, it was one of those. And we had to help them build the water, because it was a truck. She said they still need to take the water.
Yeah, because you can have five, there's five different pillars of Do It We. So we did the water one in Ecuador. And then we did the education one in Tanzania. And they also have food, opportunities, and health that you could also do service work for.
Well, you'd have to like work and do another.
Do another.
Redo your senior year a few times over.
Be a senior.
Why, every time later, you should do that.
One of the greatest programs. Darryl, that was very nice.
So after you leave, does another school group come in and do something?
Yeah, they said that because everything is hand labor, it takes them months to finish that classroom. And here, it could take us like a couple weeks. So we do as much as we can. And then they said every couple weeks, and you, well, it depends on which, when it comes. But every couple weeks, a group comes and just keeps going where we left off. Like when we got there, someone had already started. So there was already like a bottom in some were already built up. But we just continued what they had started. And then another group's gonna come after us. And they're just gonna keep going until it's finished.
Obviously, it's like, it's still a need. So people there will still try and do the best to continue until somebody else can come and help them. As I were going, I think, you have to give as much to the world as you can.
Is that a belt buckle or a cell phone?
They all have cell phones there.
Really?
Yes. They said that they can, they were, we were really surprised because more people in the country have cell phones than have toilets. And everyone has either one phone or two.
Yeah, it's basically, I mean, it's high-hearted.
And one of the things we asked them was like, how is that possible? The average family's living on $7. And I'm thinking, I'm talking to these guys knowing what my family's cell phone bill is. And what they said is that once the infrastructure was there, I mean, they had to get prices in line with the people that are there. So their dirt cheap plans, their phones are knockoffs from China. So it's not, it's not the same stuff that we have, but it's functional. So when we met kids, like, you know, not all kids didn't have phones, but when they saw us, right away, they wanted the phone because they want to get the music off of it, because they're listening to Western music. And it was interesting because it, the tribes and whatnot, it seems extremely remote because it is. But they have enough technology that they know what's outside. And that's part of why they're very inquisitive.
They have cell towers?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I was very concerned about if I was gonna be able to, I was the emergency contact person. And we drove on these roads that you would not drive on in the United States to get there. And I had perfect cell service. It was, it was strange. Right. Part's a merger, I can't.
Obviously, well, you said there were hundreds of kids. So first, how many children are in each family in general? And then what, can you describe what an average school day is like for the kids there?
So, um, Shaza actually explained this to us as best as she could. Um, oftentimes, the man will have multiple lives, then they all live together, so like you can bet how many children they have, so it can be very crowded.
I said there was one guy that had two hundred and fifty kids.
Yeah.
And then he built his own cell phone.
That was not the norm. That was the one guy.
Yeah, but maybe talking about that for a long time.
And then, um, we actually did, we, at the end of one of our days, when we went to the children and we played with them and stuff, we went into one of their classrooms, and Amos explained kind of how big it always is, how crowded the classrooms are, that's why we were building that at one. So all of us, we sat like three to a bench, that were about like, probably that small. And we're all pretty big compared to those little kids, but still it was extremely crowded. And he kind of took us through, it's about the same, like, like they have geography and math and science and those basic ones. And they also have like English, because that's one of the most prominent languages. And I'm not sure how long they lasted, how long their school days were, but I just felt that it was very crowded, and they had to do the best that they could to teach us as much as possible.
If I could piggyback off that, their, uh, their first school bell was at four AM.
Yeah.
So at four AM, they rang the bell, the kids that were in the, um, the kids that lived there, they would have to get up at four AM. The other ones were starting to walk, because some of them were coming from miles away. So then they'd get there at six o'clock, and that's when they started cleaning the school. So they would take makeshift rooms that were about this big, and they'd be on their hands and knees in the dirt, sweeping any leaves that had fallen into the dirt the day before. Then they go behind the school, they sing their school song, then they do a few laps, and then they would get started, and that was probably about six thirty, uh, six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. And then they went to probably about two o'clock. And then, then they fill up their buckets. Kids that were about this high would fill up their buckets at school, because school had water that was clean, and then get the walk home. It was amazing, I mean, watching it as a teacher is just like, huh, wah? How is it that these kids are, but that's what they do, that's what they have to do, that's all that's available.
The buckets weren't little buckets, they were like three to five gallon buckets. And the really little kids might have three gallons, but like, I mean, three to five gallon buckets of water that they would just carry for, you know, sometimes hours walking home.
You should try that year for me.
Kids at my house, in the back part of our property, we have three acres, and my son, that's his job. And every now and then I feel bad, you know, when he's carrying that water back there, and I have to go in there, I'm like, that's good. He is good, he is way bigger than these kids. Not torture.
So girls, you, you went there at least with, one of the primary purposes was to build the school, or at least to try to make progress on the building. So you kind of knew what to expect, that that's what you were gonna do. What were some things that happened that you didn't expect, maybe that were left in touch with you?
I think the relationships we built was the thing that was the most surprising to me. Um, when we went to Ecuador, we, it was, I mean, we did do service work, but we were moving throughout the country the entire time. But, um, in Tanzania, we stayed in the same like centralized community the entire time, so we were able to build like much more like, like nice relationships. Um, so I was just surprised, because like, I, I'm Facebook friends with them all now, no, like now. So it's kind of fun to know that, like be in contact too, because all the like international relationships about the world is always a cool thing to say. And it's like, I felt, when we were leaving, I think I felt that we made more of a difference, because we grew so close with those people. Like on one of the goodbye days, um, all the, like the mamas of the village made us jewelry, and then they put it on us to say goodbye, and everyone cried, and it was, I think. We all grew very close with each other, so it was a lot more emotional than I thought it was going to be too.
And, um, obviously, like the main reason we went to Ecuador and to Tanzania and tried to come here today was because we love to help these countries that need it, and that's one of our goals, like in life, I suppose, is to just help as many people as we can and get to as many parts of the world and just give all that we can to them. And just, in Ecuador, I, we both learn Spanish, so we can speak Spanish to them, we can communicate to them, but like she said, we were moving around the country, so when we were here, there was that humongous language barrier. We can't speak Swedish fluently, it's a lot harder. So just like, them hugging you and just giving you these gifts was just like absolutely incredible. For just work that we were doing, I would like, just what we wanted to do, not for any particular reason.
Yes, if I could add, uh, an interesting story, when you guys were talking about connections. Uh, when we got picked up from the airport, uh, we got into these buses, and buses, international third world buses are much different than ours. There's no aisles or anything, you are just packed in there. So I'm packed in there, I'm near the front, and I'm sitting next to, oh, yeah, we got him somewhere. No, not that, oh, there we go. And that was after we knew each other, but when we first got in there, I'm sitting next to Prochaz, who is the man over here on the left. And he's, you know, he's just kind of making small talk, he said, well, what's your name? I said, my name's Chris. And he looked at me, he's like, Harriet? He's like, I've seen your pictures. Uh, it blew my mind, but he had been on Facebook, and he saw, he saw some of my photography already before we got there, through other connections, but I was like, how is this possible? I should not know a Maasai warrior. Not, well, now, yeah, actually, now we, we are in communication quite a bit. I had, um, Prochaz, the people there are just so amazing, and you think of, I, I guess I hadn't been to places like this before, so you guess, you have your preconception of what they are, but these guys are college graduates who grew up in, in some cases mud huts, uh, who just don't have access to the things that we do. Um, yet they know all the things that are going on, so the questions and everything that they have are just, you know, it just really kind of sets you back, like, boy, I wish I could bring you with me. They really wanna come to the United States, like, I would love to bring you here, because you are gonna be successful. I don't care what it is, you've worked so hard, you are this intelligent, you would be unbelievable. Um, but they can only go so far. I mean, when we were, when we drove around, um, near Arusha, we never saw like an actual real store or anything. Um, the clothes that they get are almost all secondhand, you know, even if they have something that's kind of good, that they'd wear to, that they'd wear to, well, yeah, so with many Packer fans. So lots of guys in Packer stuff, and they had, they had no idea what they were wearing, but they were happy to be in pictures with us. But it's just, just so different to see that, but to know that they were such good people, and all they wanted was to be successful and to be happy, just like us.
Even the people we didn't meet, like when we were driving, we would wave to every kid we saw on the street, and wave to every person we saw on the street, because they were just that friendly. They didn't even know us, we just obviously looked a little different when we were in the giant bus. But like, they were still like friendly, we didn't even get to meet them.
Yeah, all the kids looked so excited, just waving.
We were waving up to our bus.
But like, when I came back here, I was like, I almost forgot that I can't.
Can you say something in Swahili for me?
Uh, Jabo is hello. I have a little card at my house.
They say, um, what was it, it was like, how do you say it, how are you? It was.
How bad.
Cause it's. And then you say like, Mzurisana, or Pola means cool.
Yeah, I love Pola, love Pola.
Yeah, and then we learned, um, their traditional song, so like, we're not gonna sing it.
They sang it for us, and it was amazing. They were good.
Towards the end of the trip, everyone was like singing it together, and we'd all get so hyped up, and get so excited, and we really didn't care how crazy we probably looked, but.
They were doing it with us, they were encouraging us, they were welcoming us to do it with them.
Yeah, we even sang the song with the kids too, and they were all dancing, super excited that we knew like one of their songs, so it was really cool. Guys, I'm gonna have to find this, but I have a, a video of all of you guys walking with the water, singing Jabo.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm, we're filming from behind you, so I'll have to, I'll have to, maybe I can share it when it's all lit.
So what would you tell students who was thinking of going on one of these service trips, but were kind of lathering a little bit, and not, not so sure of ongoing to a foreign country and an unknown environment like that?
Uh, I think, I mean, it was at least basically for first time going out of a country in Ecuador, and she was too nervous, but just the amazing experiences that you had there, the way that it opens up your eyes and your heart, and like you cannot even begin to explain how much it affects you for the rest of your life to anyone who asks, but just to show them pictures and videos and tell them that it's a one simultaneous experience. And like, when I came back, and I would show my friends these pictures and tell them stories, and like, like I said the small things, they were like, I wish I would have gone. And I'd try my best to explain that before it's too late.
Yeah, a lot of people also, like, a couple of my friends were gonna go, and they backed out because their parents didn't think it was safe. But the entire time, it was super safe, there were strict rules, so we had to be with someone the entire time. And we always had to stay, like, even if we were like going like just kids away from the teachers, we always had to stay in the same area, so they knew like what was going on, and, um, it definitely raises your awareness for everything around you, so it makes you feel more cultured, and, yeah.
Are you participating in the Barrowhead School experience currently?
I was going to, and, but, um, okay, so when I have taken, like, I've taken the two language requirements, so I was going to. But at the time, I wanted to be a journalist, and then I was looking at the other classes that we had to take, and I'm like, oh, those look boring, so I wasn't going to. But after going on these trips, I actually wanted to do something with international relations or international business, and I'm all, I'm taking all those classes anyway, but because I didn't do the global seminar junior, I can't do it now.
I, yeah, me too, I mean, I didn't have the chance, because my like course load was so full to take second language, so I wasn't even able to. But I really wish that it was advertised more, because looking at it now, how I was presented to it when I was a freshman sophomore year, I just wish I could have learned a bit more about it, because I definitely wish I knew it.
Yeah, and I wish there was a chance to take it to, like your, like the global seminar class your senior year, because I definitely would have gone back and taken it, because I had, because all the classes required for you to become like, um, the global certificate, I'm taking all of them, I just, that's the only thing, is I wasn't in that class.
I just, I really wish I would have, it would have like tied in so well, and kind of helped me really just fully grasp it, but like, again, like, I, I really wish it was a, would be advertised more.
Sounds like we have some good spokesmen for that, right?
Thank you, guys. If somebody's sharing.
Maybe we'll have another one.
Thank you.
If you walked in the stair, you'd be especially tempted to not stand in there. Well, maybe not, maybe not. Okay, pressing down.
Hey, well, what do we do after now?
Greg has big shoes to put.
Thanks, Laura, I'm not saying you, we're putting you behind, once again, so.
The visitors usually go first. Uh, Greg's gonna fill us in on kind of the end of last year wrap up, and then beginning of this year highlights.
So when I started doing this and started putting these together, um, I don't do the, obviously do it chronological order, but it just didn't seem to work, it just seemed, some of the stuff that they were doing at the end was getting ready for doing the kickoff right now, so it's kind of jumbled, it's a muck, it's just kind of a mess, okay? But, uh, I wanna just kind of show you what we were up to here, I'm trying to do this from here, hopefully you can see that. I just wanted to first get started and kind of let you know what, kind of what the role of our, of the building level team is. The building level team is, is, uh, is Dev, Becky, Ryan, myself, we kind of make that, make up that team. And so our, our major responsibility really, is those, those first two are really our major responsibilities, maintaining and enhancing positive school culture and climate for students, staff and the community, and then deal with the day-to-day operations of the school. Since we've kind of switched our, you know, responsibilities, the, there used to be more curriculum stuff on my plate, but that's gotten shifted over when we went to having a director of learning, and so this is really what the, what our role is. And then the last thing is, we provide support for the other teams. So I just wanted to kind of talk to you a little bit about that, to make sure you understand it. So what I'm, the first thing I'm gonna talk about is, is a couple of groups that we've, that have started, that kind of bubbled up. Um, and so it's the, uh, it's the SLAM and the Pierce for Pierce, I don't know if you're familiar with that, if we've talked about that. But the SLAM group is the students leading a mark, and these are both student-led groups, or we have advisors for them. Um, actually, Dev, Becky and Ryan and I surface kind of like the, the advisors for these group. And, and really, the, the, it's them kind of saying, what do I want to do in our school? What, what kind of, what do I want to leave with our school? So I showed this picture to you, because that's one of our study halls, it's South Campus Study Hall. And prior to starting this group, that was a white wall that students looked at every day for years, just stared at that wall, if you're at that front desk right there, that's what you stared at, was a white wall. And so they're trying to do this around the building, trying to make this place a better culture, a better climate for the students. So the things that, that they do are, are all about doing that and building that for our students. So we go, here, just some other things here. Now, you can read those here below the stairways, um, at South Campus, and if, uh, I don't know if you're close on to read those. I, oh, I know, I can blow up a mic here, so I can, hopefully I can.
I can read them, you want me to read them for you?
I think, yeah, yes, they just walked in, so.
Okay, on the bottom up, it says, dream big, uh, smile often, never give up, think positively, believe in yourself, be mindful of others, always tell the truth, embrace your challenges, learn from your mistakes, surround yourself with good people.
And so they see that going up and down the stairs, on both sides of the stairs. This is a, this we got from, uh, Jo, from Johnson's, from the Renaissance, we're partnered with them. It says, we, we've sent our kids the last three years to a conference at Carroll College. And we have, it's kind of cool, because there are, there's like eleven hundred students there from all over, we descend fifteen or twenty, and there's from all over this part of the state, there's kids there, and they, and they do, um, they have speakers, and they recognize students. And a couple of years ago, we brought it in here, two years ago, when Anthony's, of course, he was recognized, that's part of that, and, and this is the ongoing support that they give, so we get packets once a month of things that we can do, and this was one of the things we got. They're just, they're just step things, so we put them on here, put them on here at South Campus. This is at North Campus, and we, and if you will walk around, you'll see these kinds of things all over the place. And they're just little signs, little things, you know, that, you know, I don't know, I don't know if everybody knows.
Top left, stay strong, stay positive, to the right, believe in yourself, bottom, don't wish for, work for, um, and ability, and what you're capable of doing, motivation determines what you do, attitude determines how well you do it.
And you see those, if you hit South Campus, but all over North Campus, you'll see those, those signs out there. Again, trying to promote, trying to make it positive for, for the students and for the staff as well. And then this is, this is the North Campus, got a, um, a study hall again, trying to bring that, you know, sort of plain white walls, trying to make it inviting, uh, something that shows what we're up to, what we're doing here, what we're about. So then, with the, so they kind of plan some things, and they want to do things different for our freshman orientation, or registration, for freshman registration. So this is, uh, this comes, this is what we did in freshman registration, if you, um, that's, that's Mitchell, and, and he does not want to be called Mitch, is that right? He corrected that the other day, walking in the hall. Uh, so, so we had Wally there, and, and so after the guys are getting their pictures taken for their, for their, uh, your, with their ID, they can come over, and Wally's there, they can take a picture, oops, went the wrong way here. Um, they have this thing that I have to show you. So then they all, we had also had all the freshmen sign this, and I actually brought it, because I need signatures from two of you on here. So I need Laura's signature and Bob's signature. So this is actually a copy of our diploma, and then they're all signing it, making a commitment to graduate and be involved. And so we have, not all, but we're working on getting all the freshmen to sign this. Um, so I mean, you see, there's quite a few of them out there, but on the actual diploma, we need Bob's and Laura's signature, so I'm just bringing it over here right now, you guys can put your John Hancock's on this.
Do it one at a time, see if you can.
He doesn't literally mean John Hancock, but.
So as the, as the students came in for registration, they all signed that, and this was all kind of, it's all in the South Campus library, so they signed that, went and got their pictures taken, and then went over and worked with, or went with Wally, so. And they were, the kids were pretty excited about this, this was something that we worked with our Johnsons, guys, they had, uh, they actually made this specially for us, they weren't doing this for anything, or anybody else, but Dev talked to our Johnsons, guys, he said, hey, listen, all the business we give you, can't you, uh, come up with something a little bit bigger? They had a little one like this for us, I'm like, that's not gonna work for five hundred and forty kids, so. So then they came in, they signed in, and these are just some pictures that, you know, just showing you what we're trying to do, trying to make it warm, make it comfortable, make it like a place they wanna be. Um, so there's another one, there's a, this was an interesting one, this is a freshman boy, he's got a class of two thousand twenty-two, so, and that's his sister. Um, so there's another one, there's a, this was an interesting one, this is a freshman boy, he's a class of two thousand twenty-two, so, and that's his sister with him, not his, his, his. Um, and here's another one with the, with the, um, daughter and the father, class of twenty-two with Wally as well. So they could pick what they wanted. They had little things that they could hold up and to take their pictures, and we, I would say probably each, some of the freshmen that went through, got their picture taken, and, and we have those, and we will use those for various things throughout the year. So then I'm, um, so when I'm putting this together, one of the things that we, we were working on last year, obviously, is hiring our new staff, and that's one of the responsibilities that the, that we're all, that we're involved in. Adam does interviewing for his group and leads that, but we're also involved in that, and then all the rest of the teachers that are hired go through, come through our, our group. So I just wanted to give you, give you a picture. Some of you are actually able to meet the new teachers, but we took pictures of all of the new teachers in there, um, as much as we could in their role. So you can see that's Nick, and he's our new school psychologist, um, and that one was, this one's kind of a stage one, because, you know, he's, he's working psychologist, he's not in a classroom. The rest of them are, I mean, clearly are not stages, when we went in the classrooms and took the pictures of them, so. So that's Nick, he's, uh, and he, we, he came in from.
Elm Brook.
Elm Brook.
Yep.
Um, and I wanna just, just keep that in mind, this one, because there's a couple that I wanna kind of make note of after we get through all of this, so. And this is Andy, and he's our, he's a new Family Consumer Ed teacher, yeah, at both campuses. And, uh, he's brand-new, right out of college. This is Scott Rice. He is a new special ed teacher. We had him last year as a special ed aide, and he did a long-term sub for us, and did an outstanding job, and so we thought we'd have to land him. He also, uh, coaches football, and he's awesome with the families, he's awesome with the kids, he's got a really great addition for us. This is, uh, Jana, and you may remember her. We brought her in last year, actually. When Mike Dolly left us in March, or February, rather, we went and kind of stole her from Hartford. She was, she was not really excited about her role there and was glad to come on over, and we, and she actually was able to finish out the year here with us. So she was, she's been here for about three months, but because she wasn't here for the first part, she's still considered a newbie for us.
Not a stage one.
That is not. And that's just, that's why she's in class. My, my daughter, Hannah, last year, and she was very mad because she really liked Mr. Dolly. And then, and I mean, within a week, she's like, oh my God, she's awesome, Dad. So we, we, yeah, we reeled the land some really solid folks. Uh, so this is, this is Key Herman. She's a, a English teacher. She came in for, um, oh.
Andrew.
Andrew, Andrew Friver, thank you. And we, she came from Hartford as well.
Yeah.
And, uh, so. As a matter of fact.
They all applied.
Another, yeah, another gal from Hartford applied and was a little disappointed, and when she didn't, when she found out she didn't get it, she was, she said, "You know, anything opens up, please, I'd love, I wanna get over there," so. And these, yeah, they're experienced teachers, so, um, we're, we're very happy and, um, able, that we were able to land this. Um, and then this is, this is Cara Mooney Lekowski, our teacher. I wanna talk about her as well a little bit when I get, after we get to the last slide. Um, and she's, uh, she was an at-home mom for ten years, uh, eight years maybe, and she had been, she had taught art over at O'Connell prior to this. And, um, we were very fortunate to, to land this, to land her. And then our last person that we, that we hired is, is Ryan Dodge. And Ryan, um, had done some aid work here, and then he student-taught here, and then he threw a job at Lake Country School, and then we had an opportunity here when Geentia left at the kind of last minute, we were able to land him. Um, he does have a spouse on staff, so this, you know, so Trina is his, is his wife, so, uh, so he's had a lot of experience here and understands it. What I want, I wanted to point out those two for you because, yeah, I think I mentioned this before, uh, yeah, I mean, our pool is getting shallower and shallower and shallower. So when we hired the, when we hired the Family Consumer Ed, there were five applicants, that was it. And when we went to go interview, three of them had already taken jobs, so we had two people to choose, to choose from. When we went to the psychologist, we went, we interviewed a number, they interviewed a number, um, couldn't find one to come, so, he did not apply for the job, Adam went and asked him to apply for the job. Same thing with Cara, our art teacher. We went through, we were interviewing, we didn't have a lot of applicants. The ones that came in were really not quality, not the quality that we were looking for, and it was, I think Donna's, Donna knew her mother, and they'd worked together, and she, it happened to mention that, that she was, that she was a former, she was an art teacher. So we called her up and said, "Hey, what do you think? Come on over, we'll talk to you." And so she brought her, she, she came into the interview, brought her little son with her to the interview, and he sat there and colored, and, and we chatted, and, and we were lucky to get her, and, and, and she only is interested in part-time because she can't be because of her kid situation. But that's what's happening. Our, the pool is really getting shallower and shallower all the time. And it's also not just for our teaching staff, but for our support staff as well. Becky and Deb, we're trying to fill some of those spots for, for, uh, greeters and for, uh, study hall supervisors, lunchroom supervisors. It's getting harder and harder, and as the economy starts to continue to get better, we cannot compete financially with them. You know, we're talking, I was talking the other day, we were stuck with one of them in the lunchroom, and she's like, yeah, you know, like, I get ten, fifty an hour here, or something like that, and, and Chick-fil-A is opening up, and they're paying fourteen dollars an hour, you know, and so it's like, and, so we can't compete it on, on, on the price. There's no way we can do that. We can't keep up with it. So we have to do it in, in different ways. And one of the ways is trying to make this, the atmosphere here a place where people wanna work, where people wanna be. So that's kind of what our billing charge is, so. So I'm gonna jump back now to one of our activities, and since he's wearing his Wings t-shirt, we'll, we'll kind of, I'll use that for the transition into the Wings. Uh, and you're, you're all aware of what's going on with Wings, but we've had, there's been, there's a few different things this year, so I just wanna kind of point out some of those things. But we have, as you see, four hundred ninety-seven out of five hundred forty. That actually numbered, that actually numbered was really five thirty-eight, because we've had two students who enrolled after, so they wouldn't have been able to be in, uh, in the pool. They, they, they weren't here yet when we did it. And we, we've changed some of the way we do things, but if you look here, these are the options. Kids can pick two of these to go to and be, to do an activity and, and, you know, get acclimated to the school. That's what it's all about, about getting these young folks acclimated, feeling comfortable, wanting to be here. There's a lot of work and effort put in on the front end for, with our mentors, our student mentors that come here, they're here, there's been a lot of time here, working with, getting this all set up, so it's not just willy-nilly, it's meaningful. So, uh, but it's really very, extremely valuable for our students and just for the whole organization. And then, again, we have a, have Thursday morning, we have parents here, and I think it's like a hundred and forty parents showed up to talk and ask questions of the freshmen. So that was really a good experience here. A couple of pictures coming from here, we have, uh, Mr. Stuber, and you can read over here, they're basically, it says.
Who's reading that?
It says, uh, middle's, you know, air, I think, high school versus middle school or something like that, and they're just talking about how you, you know, your teachers are not going to be chasing you down to get your homework done. They're not gonna be, you know, you have to take charge on yourself, you have to go talk to teachers. So we're teaching them. That's the goal, is teach them how to be high school students. We don't let them just come in and figure it out, that we teach them and make sure so that they can hit it running and be successful when they get here, as opposed to kind of taking a semester to kind of work through and figure it out, and then falling behind during that time, so. But it's not just all of this, there's a lot, there's some fun games they like to have, and so this was something, and thank you, Dave, for bringing the, for bringing the fire truck over here, but they were doing, they did, uh, all the groups put together, they were doing small groups, and they tried to protect an egg, and then they dropped the egg from the fire truck. And so they're trying to design, trying to design, uh, it's problem solving. Design a package that will protect your egg when it falls, and there were some that were very successful and some that weren't so successful.
Ninety-eight feet?
It was ninety-eight feet that they fell?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very cool. And they were, and many that, that survived, right?
Yes, a lot of.
Okay. All right, so a couple of other things, I just wanna keep you informed into, that's going on. I have a group that's in the principal's cabinet. As a matter of fact, Ellie, who was just here, she's on my principal's cabinet, and we meet, it's a group that I meet with, um, monthly, and it's four groups, so I do, I do two groups at North and two groups at South. It's during their lunch hour, 'cause I don't want them to miss any school, and I don't want it to be after school, 'cause all of these kids are involved. So we have to do it during lunchtime, so we get a lot done. It's, uh, quickly, we have to really work at it and kind of stay on task, but we do get a lot done. And we, they be, they become like my ears and eyes and communicate back to me. And to give you an example of one of the things, the, the announcement monitors, and I know that we talked about this last year, but if you see right there, we have six of those around the, around the building now. So what was happening prior to this, came up in our principal's cabinet, we have, we do announcements before school every morning. Well, the teachers don't like it to be, like, the bell rings at seven twenty, the teachers don't want the announcements read after seven twenty because it cuts into their teaching time. And we only have forty-minute lessons, so if it's five minutes of, of announcements, now that's a thirty-five-minute class. It's really not fair to those kids, not fair to those teachers. So we only do the, we read the, we do the, after the bell, we do the pledge, and there might be one or two really important announcements that everybody has to hear. That's it, and then they're done. All the other announcements are read at seven fifteen to seven twenty here, and seven twenty-five, seven thirty at North. Well, the kids can't hear them because they're, they're walking the halls, they're talking to their friends, they're not paying attention. So the kids are like, you know, Mr. Torg, we can't hear the announcements. It sounds like, it sounds like Charlie Brown's teacher, you know? And they can't hear anything, so we can't, well, let's brainstorm. What can we do? So this is what we came up with, and so we have, in the, in the study halls at North and South, in the, in the cafeterias at North and South, and the foyers at North and South. That's what they have, those announcements scroll all day long. So now, where it's, we read up there, it's something about Drama Club and contact Ms. Marcano. If I didn't hear that, how do I know what to do? But now, I can see that, and it's all over. We have lunchroom menus on there, so, and if we need to, like, call kids down to the office, we can put it on there, non-emergency stuff, you know, Mom, you left your lunch, or dropped your lunch off.
Your friends told them.
You know, boom, we just stop down in the office. So that's where, that's what we, you know, and that's just one of the things, um, a few years ago, you know those, as you drive, you see those, the signs, the stop signs right in the middle of the road, um, that are in, that are actually in the road here, over here, right in front of South Campus? Well, we, kids were almost getting hit by cars because there were, cars were flying through there, and kids were walking between cars, and so that was there. That came up totally from them. I wouldn't have known that. Um, the fact that we teach health at the, at South Campus to such a freshman, that was years that was never done. It's always sophomores, 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 sophomores. They had a speaker come in, he's talking about drugs and alcohol, and I said, uh, you know, what do you guys think of, uh, Mr. McGowan? He's pretty cool. And the kids are, yeah, he's great, he's great. Everyone's saying how great he is, and one girl's going like this, and I'm like, what's up? And she said, "Well, it's good stuff, but it's too late. He's talking to us about drugs and alcohol. We're all sophomores." That, that summer between freshman and sophomore years, and some where kids experiment, where we are, we have our licenses, and we have access to other kids, we don't have jobs yet. That's when we need to, we have to have that information before that, so that's what I thought, okay. So that's what pushed us to move it, so it does have a lot of impact on what goes on in the school here. Freshman meetings, this is an interesting thing, and this is something that Deb and I started two years ago. And we started meeting with the freshmen, and we'd bring them in six at a time, and we'd just talk about stuff. And our goal was, we didn't really have a goal, how many, we're just gonna see how it's gonna go, and we probably got maybe about twenty percent of the freshmen in that came in for these little sessions with us. And we just, we spent about forty minutes with them, they sit down, and we ask them questions like, what school do they go to, what's their favorite subject? What's one of these favorite subjects? What kind of sports are they involved in? So, uh, let me see, take this into show. And so this is one of our sessions from, actually, this year, we, this is one of our little sessions. So we sit around and we go, kind of go around the horn. I, I introduce myself, Deb introduces herself, and then we just go around the horn. They all introduce themselves, kind of the same questions. The purpose of this is kind of threefold. It's one, for them to get to know us a little bit, and we tell them, you know, now you know us, you can talk to us. If you've got concerns, questions, issues, come and talk to us. Our doors are open, we're there for you. And we'll come and talk to you, so when you give us that, you gave us your information, so we're gonna take that. So if you take a look at that young man who's kind of the far back with the short hair over there, the black top on, okay? He's, we're sitting there, and he says, "I'm not involved in any, any school activities, and I'm not, I don't plan on being involved in any school activities." So, so Deb immediately, okay, that's not gonna work. We're gonna take him under a wing. So then, we're talking, so after the left, I said, "I'm on my principal's cabinet," so he's at least, we've got him, and he's a talker, he's very funny. Um, so that's what we do. Two, two years ago, we found a young man who's interested in, in doing, um, video, videography. It's actually Steve's nephew. And so we tapped into him, and he did a ton of our videography for us after that, um, because he had that interest, and so we were referring him to around the school, all over the place, to help us with that. So, uh, the gal with the gray sweatshirt, she's a competitive rock climber. I didn't even know that that was, that was there. But one of our counselors is a, is a big rock climber, so I'm gonna connect the two of them together, just to, so that they, there's a connection there. So we, so we did this first year, we got about twenty percent. Last year, we probably got about forty percent of the freshmen. It's really hard because Deb's and my schedule don't jive always together, and I'll, we'll like, let's get somebody in, and all of a sudden, I'll get a phone call from something, and I gotta deal with it, or a kid comes down for disciplinary issues, and we, and so we just, okay, we'll get it tomorrow. Then we never get, so it gets pushed back, pushed back. So Deb kind of looked at her dad, I looked at the kids, and what she found was, is that the kids that, the kids that we talked to, none of those kids had, had ever had a second disciplinary issue. So they might have had a first disciplinary issue, but they never got to a second. And the kids that had two, three, five, that had a lot of recidivism, those were the kids that we never got to. So I think that proves that that's the, that's the situation there, but it indicates that maybe by having that connection with us, and we were getting a positive connection with them, the kids who might be a little bit, you know, apt to be, have, have some discipline issues, might not do that. And so we're really gonna make an effort, so now what we do is we put it into our calendars. So no matter what, you know, we go in today, went in at eighth hour, we did it. So my calendar's on Deb's calendar. If I'm not available, she does it. If she's not available, I do it. We try to do them together, 'cause it works well together. It's a little bit time-consuming, but we think it really is paying some dividends for, just that, again, making those kids feel comfortable, making them feel welcome, making them feel like they wanna be a part of our, this organization. One of the disciplinary issues that we did deal with last year pretty, pretty extensively at both campuses was the area of vaping. I, I think I shared that with, with, at some point that we talked about it. It, it's very serious, and it's a, the problem was really quite extreme last year for us. So we're trying to take a two-step approach to deal with this. Uh, we had a meeting with all the feeder schools, principals, and superintendents came, and we chatted and talked, and they recognized they'd had some problems with it, they know what's happening. I offered up myself to go and speak to their parent groups. Three of the schools took me up on it. I'm gonna contact those other four this fall and say, listen, you know, I know we couldn't work it out last year, do you want me to come in? 'Cause I would be more than happy to do that. But I think more important than what we're going to do, I, I like this idea that came up through their, through the SLAM group. We're gonna pick two kids from each feeder school, so two kids from Richmond, two kids from Stone Bay, who went there, who are juniors and seniors, who are popular kids, who are well-known kids, who those kids looked up to when they were eighth graders, and these kids were, and these kids were fourth graders, they looked up to, and they're gonna go over and have a conversation. Go and sit down with them in their health classrooms and talk to them about the, the concerns about vaping and those kind of things. The, the thought was, is that I can talk to them in the face, the counselor can talk to them in the face, the parents can talk to them in the face, but the kids might have more impact than we might, than we would have. So, for instance, at Richmond, Nick Wolfile's gonna go over, still, you know, starting quarterback, all the kids know him. Well, he, if Nick Wolfile comes in and says, "Hey, it's not cool today, you guys should not be doing that," we think that's going to have more of an impact than if I say, "Hey, kids, it's not gonna be cool." So we're gonna give that a try, and it's, uh, I'm, I'm excited. We better, we're planning this out. So this fall, they'll be going to all the feeder schools, and we, uh, we'll be doing that, working together with them. And then, what's my last thing here? So if you notice that, um, a lot of the stuff I'm talking about is creating a culture for the students, but it's not just for the students, it's, it's for everybody. We wanna do this. So I wanna show you something that you may or may not have seen, that we do. It looks a little corny, it's a little hokey, okay, but this is one of our, this is the children of one of our staff members, and we have, uh, we have them up in, up in the office here at South Campus, and we have all the babies up. And so if you've had a baby in the last two years, your baby's picture is up on the wall. And it looks kind of, it's kind of corny, but I, I will tell you that probably half of the candidates that we bring in to interview for, that come to South Campus, that we interview, may comment about that thing, that it's like, that really made an impact on them, that this is a place that cares about people. That it's not a, it's not this just stale institution, but it's a place where people are valued and that the staff are valued. And so, um, I think that it speaks volumes to what we're trying to do, but that's what, when I talk about making it more attractive to work here, because we can't win on the money thing, that's where we have to win. We have to be, have that kind of a comfort, that kind of a level, that kind of a involvement, and show of caring for them, so that they say, "This is the place I wanna be." And so we, we tend to do those things. The last slide, and you're looking, it's kind of weird, why would I put this at the end, but I'll tie it all together here. So you may not have seen this, but we've done this at both campuses. Have, has anybody seen this yet? There are the windows right over here. Um, this is, this is our Arrowhead Way model, or what do we call it, or is it the model?
Expectations.
Expectations, be appropriate, be responsible, be, uh, respectful. So we, and we've done this at both campuses, so the kids can see it, but that's not why we did it, okay? Um, if you, you see this light right over here, where the light comes in, shining right there, and it sends that, that's the sun, that's the sun coming in through those windows. Well, in January and December, the wind, the light comes through these windows, and it shines right on the eyes of our greeters. It is like they're, it's like they're looking straight at the sun for two hours straight. It is a killer for them. They literally wear sunglasses when they're sitting there. They can't see when people are walking out. When we designed it, we didn't think about that. You know, we, we said, "Let's put this greeter station here so that we, you know, so it's, we didn't, you used to have..." we didn't, you used to have sitting on a table and chairs, you know, and this wasn't proper, it wasn't right, it was cold. So, well, we didn't think about that. And literally, and so they've been coming to, so this has been, been worked for over a year. They, you know, what are we gonna do? We just, you know, paint it black or that's that, right? So I found a company that we worked with and they designed that. And we were actually just gonna block it. And that was gonna cost us, I want to say like $2,000, just to put some like opaque clean white, you know, something covering over that. And this was, it was $2,700 with everything, that's installation and everything, to do both buildings. And the money's coming out of money that I have, I have raised, it's on taxpayer dollars, it's money that I have, I have coherced out of different companies. So, and, and the senior party, the extra money from the senior party is part of that as well to pay for that. So the, the thought though is, it's not, it's kind of a twofold. It's really for the comfort of our staff, the physical wellness of our staff, and then they, they're looking at it going, they take care of us. They're, they, there's a problem, they saw the problem and they're fixing the problem, not just saying, sorry, we can't do anything, we're raising our rent. That again, is valuable to them. They're going, they care about us because they're taking care of this problem. And they're like doing cartwheels, I mean, because when they, when they got really sunny and they saw how much sun's coming through here, you can see not a drop of sun comes through there. So this should be just awesome. So anyway, that's kind of what, what we've been up to as a, as a building group. And the one thing that's take away from this, I just wanted to remember, that, that pool is getting shallower and shallower and we need to, we need to do whatever we can to support that because it's, it's not gonna get any better. Just in the last magazine we get from the School Board Association, they had an article in there, it's across the country between, in like a six-year period of time, the number of graduates coming out of universities and education has dropped 23%. So from 2008 to 2015, it's dropped 23% of the amount of people graduating with education degrees going into education. The other thing they said, they don't have the number on it, but somewhere maybe twice as many teachers are leaving after the first or second year in the profession and getting out of it. So that's making that, and then you combine that with baby boomers who are retiring and leaving, it's making that pool shallow, shallower and shallower. And that's something we're gonna have to just keep in mind and conscious of. Any questions?
So you got a lot going on.
You do.
Wonderful. Thank you. I got a big group to work with there. They're coming with ideas all the time, so it's fun.
So the meetings that you have with the kids, are those during their study halls?
So they do it during their lunch hour.
Oh, it's lunch hour.
So they bring their lunch in, I bring, I bring, I bring my lunch, I bring Tootsie Pops, I get Tootsie Pop. And then they eat their lunch with me and, you know, they, we chat and talk and then they, so they don't miss any school, they don't miss study hall. They miss their friends. And I will say this, we would always have two or three kids that pull up because they don't want to be away from their friends. Or, I always eat lunch with my boyfriend, so I can't be on the cabinet anymore. I get that every year, you know? So, but the kids love it. I mean, just, like you said today, when we start this campus, we're trying, I can't wait to get started. So it's a, they feel like in power, that they have a say and it's, you know, I've been doing this, that for probably 20 years and it's really been one of my favorite things. I go in there and just love it. I interact with those kids, it's just awesome.
I'm not talking about the cabinet, I'm talking about you and Deb.
Oh, yes, yes, we take them out of study halls.
Those, those are study halls?
Those kids come out of study halls, yes. Okay, so we just call down and say, send us six kids, and then they keep track of the six kids and they send them down. We spend, we spend probably about 30 minutes. So they still have time to go back down to the study hall. And then if the kid, they ask for volunteers. So who wants to go down? So it's not, they're not picking on a kid that's gotta have that time to study for an exam, you know, the next hour or whatever else. They can, they know I don't want to go, they, it's just the kids who want to go. Eventually we'll get it, we'll get through everybody.
How do the kids end up under cabinet? How are those children?
So at South Campus, I have to go literally knocking on doors and asking because I just can't, the, or whatever reason, I don't know what it is. North Campus, I have to turn people away every year. I get 50 kids wanting to be on my principal's cabinet at North Campus and I have to turn them away. And when I try to do it, they have to make an application form. And I really only have one requirement, you have to talk. You gotta be a talker. If you're gonna sit there and just not say anything, I don't need you there. I want someone who's gonna challenge me, I want someone who's gonna challenge the other students. I want that student who's gonna say no, thumbs down. I tell the kids that story all the time because I don't want you to be there just kind of nodding your head, agreeing with everybody else. So I want independent thinkers, people who are gonna speak for themselves. So I go through and I make sure that I don't have like all football players or all Broadway company kids. I try to get a, you know, cross-section of students. At South Campus, what I do, I go to the teachers, I'll go to the choir teachers, I'll go to the social studies teachers, and I'll say, who are your talkers? Who are the people that are, you know, who are gonna be interacting? And then they give me names and then I interview them and bring them up.
Great.
Thanks, Craig.
It wasn't Tanzania, but it was really close. Thanks, Greg.
And then the last item, you've seen these before. So my thought is for my superintendent goal topics for the year. And I typically bring the topics to you in September and then I bring more detailed plans later on before the midway point of the year or sometime in fall. Now that we have the focus plan in place, it seems very natural to me to use our four enduring goals. So those general topics of preparing students for the future, fostering and nurturing, positive learning climate, communicate effectively, and advanced facility infrastructure and technology to support student learning. So I would propose those be the four main goal areas. I mean, we call them superintendent goals, but it really is goals for the whole organization. And then I will put out strategies or more detailed work to you. Right now, we're in the process of determining strategies for each of those categories. And that process is involving staff. We are not, you hear a lot in presentations about team, the building level team, the ODT, which is our organizational development team, our administrative team. You hear about the teaching and learning team, the technology team. We work in teams. We are not a top-down organization. We just don't function that way. We would not ham staff. Here's the strategies for these goals that your administrative team worked out, had at it. We are getting input from our faculty members. So in August, we had an activity where within each of these goals, every staff member had a chance, every faculty member had a chance to talk about what are our areas of strength in each of these goal areas and what are some challenges or opportunities for growth or improvement. And we're tabulating, we have 125 teachers. We're tabulating all of their comments and then we're going to see, is there anything that's bubbling up from our faculty as key areas within these goals we should be addressing as strategies? Part of the goal of a focus plan is to help us focus. If we have 30 or 40 things on the plate, we won't do any of them really well. So we want to find out what are the key strategies to help us address these goals this year. And those strategies might stay in place for two years, or it might be a short-term strategy for a year and it might fall off the plate and something new comes on because I don't know that any of these goals will be finished within a year or two or three. These are probably five to eight-year goals. We have another activity, we're in the process of planning for faculty involvement again in the end of October. And then with all of that input, our administrative team will do our wording and prioritization. So I think in Feb, or I mean, November or by December, I'll be able to bring or present you with more detailed strategies of what we'll work on through the end of this year and into next year. Does that sound like an okay plan?
It does. Do you have any questions?
Anthony and Greg were getting a little more excited.
I'm okay with that.
I figured.
Just go step up to me.
I guess I have to go to Tanzania.
Yeah. There you go.
Well, let's see what you've got next.
All right, moving on, community reports.
What?
Curriculum.
You don't get to interview again. I mean, this, I'm just struggling. Wait till next month.
Talk about needing to step up your game.
All right, so your next meeting is September 27?
Yes.
Okay. My name's legislation.
No, I was just gonna say Sue.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm helping Greg with some.
If you're wondering, that, that November 1st then is fine. I don't know if you want to put that in, something so we know, but I assume that's accurate.
We had a tentative date of October 25th for another curriculum committee meeting, but that's a professional development day. So we're thinking we'll move that to the following Thursday, which is November 27.
Well, but the other thing is, is this next curriculum meeting, neither one of us can remember.
Oh, yeah, 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 that just came up. And I.
On the 27th?
Yeah, we're both out of town. So I, here. I mean, what we'll be doing, right, there's a couple of things on the agenda. One is a summer school report out, which we do every, every year, kind of a look ahead with professional development and some report out on some of the early college credit program, options, course options, youth apprenticeship. So you can, just make sure you do.
Okay, I mean, it makes, it's fine. It depends on you guys and how many, I mean, is there enough?
Maybe we'd be able to make sure we supply you with the resources that are brought forward. Because a lot of times we don't get until we get, get here and get.
Yeah. But we're two-thirds of the committee, him and I.
Wait a minute, I'm on that committee too. I just realized that.
Okay, it's not a concern. Only half the committee.
I don't know how you feel. I could go to the next Thursday for me too. Thursday's not a bad time, so that's, that's fine. I'm not doing it.
October 4th?
Okay. I don't have a Thursday for me.
That's the next Thursday.
I'm running for two weeks, but I can give the information and read it.
Are you back to the 4th?
I am. We can make it to 4th. If you're okay with that.
I'm, I'm fine. You okay with that?
Six forty-five minutes.
Mm-hmm. Ten-four.
Okay, October 4th.
Ten-four, ten-four. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, finance and legislation. Craig, Steve.
You can see that there's a resolution, you can click on and bring that up behind your pocket, for the short-term borrowing needs for the year. And Steve has gone out and he's got competitive bids and he should have a handout in front of you. You can see the ones that's highlighted. Steve, please give us detail on that.
Sure. Annually, this is our annual short-term borrowing note. And we currently have a $1.475 million note outstanding, so that one will get paid back. And this one, that we're looking to borrow for 18, 19 is $1.355 million. And the reason we do this is really when it comes to right around January, you know, right now, in August, we receive a pretty large tax settlement. That was the end of the 2018 tax levy payments. And then with the majority of our revenue coming through tax levy and then the next tax payment, levy payment does not come until about January 15th to 20th. So we, we, we're in a period now where we have cash, but then it dwindles down as we, you know, pay staff and pay the bills and, and the deficit is projected to be about $220,000 in January. And this gives us a little, little cushion to help if there are some unexpected emergencies or, or cash flow isn't the same as what it is, what we had projected. And essentially, we borrow this money and we will put it to use as well. The interest rate right now at the local government investment pool is 2%. So we borrow the money at this amount, have it available for cash flow and then invest it. And those rates probably will go up, the 2% interest rate that we were getting for our investments will probably go up during the years as well. So that, those rates have gone up over a percent in the last year. So we should be able to hedge and even though we're, we're spending that interest expense, we are gonna generate some interest income as well on this money. And at the same time, make sure we're protecting, have enough cash flow to pay the bills and when the cash is short.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the grant.
I still move.
Motion, second. Questions?
We pay, we normally pay back the 4th, 25th, don't we? For the following year, like it says payback. We'll mature on the 25th, September 25th of 19. Usually, don't we pay it off earlier than?
No.
We don't? We always do that?
Yep, non-callable, it goes for a full year. So we got another note coming due right before we get this money, the day before. So we pay that one off, then we get more money.
Okay.
To help our cash flow.
And how does this compare to last year?
Last year, we borrowed $1.475 million.
Interest rate seems like it's the same or close to.
It's, it's a lot, it's probably a percent higher.
Percent higher.
So, you know, the, obviously the, the prime, is it the prime rate? I'm not sure what it is, but essentially, interest rates have increased pretty significantly from last, last year, you know, as far as significantly, probably more than double. But from under 1% to 2%.
But Dave also, as I understand it, we can deposit this, add interest to our credit, and that'll offset almost all of this interest rate.
Correct.
So the net is only maybe a quarter to a half percent.
Yeah, maybe a couple thousand dollars to have use of this money to ensure that we are, we do not run out of money.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and any questions? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Next item on there, all of you do part of the credits. I believe that's over.
Oh, yeah, we, I think most of us, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. So we have to certify the levy and then such on October 23rd. We all need to be there, or at least we need to have a quorum present. So please put that on your calendar, 7:00 AM on the 23th of October.
We got that?
7:23.
What time?
7:00.
Seven?
That's when I was 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on, buildings and grounds.
Yeah, if you recall, last, I believe it was last spring, the state came up with a hundred million dollars in a safety grant. And Lauren and the rest of the industry jumped their hopes to get that done and we have a list of about $400, some thousand dollars worth of wish list items out and we ran, she worth of wishlist items out, and we ran, she garnered a whopping $20,000, some, some hundred dollars, $21,000. And so, it wasn't done in what we would consider to be a very equitable fashion. I guess it was done by, by school number, as far as the state concerned, not student population, that type of thing, so it really worked against us. Only about $40 million, a hundred million was distributed, so the state came up with a second wave, another grant for the balance of the $60 billion. And this one's gonna be more, this one's gonna be based on student population, we're just paying the, around $120,000, $120,000 in the second wave. And we wanna utilize that money for, basically for fixing up some of the safety issues with the doors, with some of the locks, and some of the cameras on the doors, so we know if the door's open, and you see it on the cameras of the greeting area and that kind of stuff. Another thing we wanna do, is we have 505, approximately 505 doors between the two campuses, and right now, we don't have an easy way of locking those doors, in case of an intruder or some other incident at the school. The teachers have to get the key, they have to go on the hallway, lock the door, go back in the, go back in the classroom, secure it from that side. So what we're gonna do is have retrofit those locks, so that the teachers are able to lock them from the inside of the classroom, so there'll be a dead bolt or a bolt on both sides, keep, keep access on both sides of the door, so they actually don't lock the doors from the inside, and I have to try the outside in case of an intruder or whatever. So the grant money will pay for about 280 of those locks, and we're anticipating, you know, we talked at length about, well, do we do all of them, do we pick and choose which teachers we like better, and protect those classrooms, or how do we do this? And, part of the problem is, we'd end up with having a couple different lock systems, different master key systems, key tracking and everything else, and what we'd like to do is do the entire school when we do it. One, locks of, keys have been issued over the last number of decades, nobody's really sure who has keys, there's not really good inventory on the keys, that kind of thing. And so, we're gonna try to retrofit the doors so that we have a common lock system throughout the entire campus, have a lock control, so we have a better idea of who's got keys and that type of thing. So we're probably looking at utilizing fund balance for the balance of those 500 doors, approximately 500 doors. Part of that funding also has to be, part of that grant also has to be used for education, for, I believe psychologists and some of the teachers and other staff members, so I think that came up to around $10,000, if I recall something, and they would. So that was pretty much the, what we talked about, is how to utilize that money from the school safety grant. And then the other thing we did was, we, I got, Kevin gave us an update on the North Campus tech debt update project, we took a tour of the North Campus area, we built a classroom in there, the shop area was, part of it was painted nude ductwork, it's beautiful, I mean, to have a classroom, you can actually utilize it, you can see what's going on, it is much brighter, it's just very inviting. Unfortunately, because of the demands of equipment, we couldn't get the HVAC units in here prior to school, so they're anticipating being able to utilize that space in probably about around that cover first, so teachers have been jury reading things and making allowances for doing other things as far as the classroom and that kind of stuff, until they can get in there. And we cannot get occupancy permit until the HVAC is approved and so on. When we did that project, we had approximately $64,000 in contingency built into the budget. The actual business came back about $14,500 over what was budgeted. So, we also did some other stuff, we decided to do some painting, which I think was around, close to $40,000, I think, or something. But bottom line, it looks like we'll be around $22,000 under budget, including the contingency and then the overages, the other stuff, or the other things that we included that weren't really planned for, so. It's, it's going real good, it looks great, very inviting, everybody's thrilled with it. The wall's been opened up on the outside, it's done, it's a concrete wall, we've got nice windows, students can see in there, kinda like the North Campus where students walk past and see, see what's happening, and get more involved in that kind of stuff. Anyway, that was pretty much, I mean, we, and we took a tour of a lot of the things that were done, we had some roofing areas that were leaks that were problematic, that have been repaired, we did repairs on both roofs, on both North and South Campus this summer. We had, the library in North was leaking, there were water stains along the walls, I can't stop, that's been rectified. Unfortunately, still have a big waste basket sitting out in the hallway, at least we did at the time, where there's, there is one leak that they haven't tracked down yet as far as where it's coming from. I don't believe they've done that in the last week or so. So things are really important, you know, to do as far as the summer projects.
Cool, all right, thanks, Dan.
Max Meele will be on the 7, or at 7:00 AM on the October 3rd.
All right, other personnel, we have one action item to approve our 2018 Arrowhead Award recipients, the list was included with our packet, included two sitting members in this room. There's a motion to.
So.
Second. Motion second. Any questions? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Congratulations, Kent and Diane.
Thank you.
Okay, policy, Diana?
No report.
No report. The VSB, nothing to report other than, you've probably seen the flyers for the fall usual meetings, ours is up for October 25th in Milwaukee. If you're interested in going, guarantee with Diane, help me get set up with that. CISA, sue anything?
No.
Your business, we have some employee transactions, we have one reservation to approve.
We're just the first.
Yeah, motion, we have a second.
Second.
Yes, I can, any questions on that? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. And we have contracts and appointments.
I move that we approve these contracts, if they're stated here.
A motion and a second, any questions, I'm close.
Where are some of those?
Most recently added today.
Oh, that were added today, I didn't hear.
Okay, no other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. We have no donations this time. Pursuant to State Statute 19851C, the board will move into closed session and reconvene to advance public business matters, we get the first closed session, with now the evidence, roll call, I'm sorry, the abortion first.
So move.
A motion and a second, roll call, sorry, Kim?
Yes.
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 Very close, thank you, everybody.